East Hampton Town Board, we are live.
Great, thank you, LTV. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board Work Session of Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Cheryl, if you could please read the roll call.
President.
Present.
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 Present. We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So today, we start with public portion, and we ask folks to kindly keep their comments to three minutes. And that's followed by topics. We're going to get here about the bids that are going to be on for this Thursday from Jeannie Carosa. We'll have a recommendation from Samantha Klein on the Sustainable Planning in Coastal Communities grant. We have presentations today from the Springs Food Pantry. They're going to give us an update, and that's led by their Executive Director, Holly Reichart Wheaton. We then have a presentation from the Family Service League by Jeff Steigman and Carol McGee. And then that is followed by a presentation by the Sustainability Committee on Tree Protection Code Recommendations, followed by Councilmember Tom Flight's campaign, "Make Room for Rescue." So before we get into our topics, we start with public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board? Gloria. Ooh, you know what, Gloria, when you get up, could you just adjust the podium? It was moved last night for the Arts Council meeting, and we want to make sure that Ian can see you. Perfect. And then if you could adjust the mic, my apologies. Is that about right?
You're a natural. Thank you.
I can move the podium. I'm here with my Sustainability Committee hat on. Thank you for liaising that so well, Kate, and my East Hampton Compost Rewild hat on, which, as many of you know, East Hampton Compost is a collaboration between the town and Rewild Long Island. And oops, we've done it again. It's another composter sale and rain barrel sale that is going on here in the town of Southampton. Why is it so important? You can save money, reduce waste, protect our bays, and, you know, it's an easy way to take steps towards sustainability in your own backyard. Everyone thinks that composting is really complex. It is really not. It's more like cooking, not baking. You can keep throwing stuff in that pot, let it simmer, and that soup's going to be good a few days later, a week later. So join us, join the compost crew, join your neighbors who are composting. It's amazing how many people right here in East Hampton Compost, mainly they're worried about muss, fuss, smell, pests. We've got enclosed containers that will deter any sorts of pests. We've got compost coaches who will guide you through the entire step-by-step process. There's we've got a step-by-step guide on RewildLongIsland.org/compost. So please join us and help keep East Hampton green and blue. These are the colors I associate with East Hampton. Do you want to put a plug in for Sunday afternoon? In Matthew's Garden? Oh, that is, that's, we are going to have our commendation ceremony for the summer program interns. We had 30 high school students this summer doing a full environmental and slash community internship, doing everything from harvesting tomatoes to working at Springs Food Pantry. Yay! Can't wait for that presentation. And also compost. They collected almost, or actually, four and a half tons of food scraps. So, and sorted through all of them to make sure there was no contamination. And everything is composting away very nicely at the town recycling center and at Balsam Farms. Thank you, Ian. Will the interns be coming to the work session for a presentation like they did last year? I can see if we can do that. Okay, that would be great. Yeah. All right, beautiful. Thanks, Gloria. Would anyone else like to address the board? Jason, is there anyone on the line?
Yes, we have two callers on the line. I am unmuting the first right now.
Thank you.
Okay, caller ending 4602, can you hear me?
Hi, Tom, can you hear me?
Yeah, you are on the air.
Excellent. Great. Good morning, Town Board, and to all on this beautiful late summer day. This is Betsy Petrowski calling in to comment on today's work session presentation by the Sustainability Committee's proposal for a new tree protection ordinance to our town's current code. And the opportunity last evening to read through the presentation's documents posted on the town's website, and I must say with great emphasis that I agree wholeheartedly with its content and initiative. I'm sure everyone who lives in our town has their own personal horror stories about properties in our neighborhoods and surrounding areas that have been recently sold and then 99% cleared regardless of our town's current clearing restrictions. I know I have many of my own experiences witnessing this act of destruction in my neighborhood and beyond its borders. Usually, these old stately native trees are replaced by rows upon rows of arborvitae that we all know negatively impact our local ecosystem and environment. I am looking forward to the committee detailing all the key issues they have addressed regarding this problem, how it affects not only the charm of our town and sense of place, but also the impact this clearing, the destruction of our trees has on our environment and our wildlife. I want to thank this committee for taking on this massively important issue at this critical time for our trees' protection, and also to thank the Town Board members in advance to take this issue very seriously, as I and everyone else that I know does as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Betsy.
Okay, moving on to the next caller. All right, caller ending 3244, you're on the air. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear. Go for it.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Board. This is Martin Drew, Springs. I'm calling once again to address the public safety issues that seem to have overtaken our neighborhood down here in Richardson Avenue and Maidstone Park Road with the ongoing nightmare known as Rita Cantina and the parking issues that have yet to be resolved, which is bearing on the safety concerns for our residents who use that road, Richardson Avenue or Maidstone Park, to access by foot or bicycle to enjoy the park. So I just wanted to ask you a couple things, please. Well, first, I'd like to thank Steve Lynch for acting unilaterally to actually get the lines striped down there, because for the longest of time, we were told that there was no enforcement possible by the Chief of Police because there was lack of the lining. So now that it's there, we're finding out that although when we call in, as he suggested, there's still no enforcement. We're getting excuses from the roadside officers. They're not really enforcing the situation about the illegal parking with no permits on Maidstone Park Road South. They're not speaking to anything about the perpendicular parking, which is encumbering the right-of-way on either side. And I know you guys are in court with this Article 78 thing, but it seems that everyone's dragging their feet and using that as an excuse when we know across the street from the property, in 1969, there were complaints about the illegal parking in the right-of-way. So I've put forward plenty of suggestions about how to solve and fix the problems, but it seems to be landing on deaf ears. So my thoughts were this. We need some no-parking signs down on the wetlands. I want to thank Steve and Mr. Cobb for getting the new speed signs up. I'm also going to ask that the one that you guys just put on the corner of Richardson and Three Mile Harbor Road, who also started addressing the commercial through traffic. We would like to get a sign there that says "No Commercial Through Traffic" because it jeopardizes the safety of our elderly residents who use that road to access the park. And daily, they walk their dogs and constantly have these speeding trucks. So thank you for the speed signs, but now it's time to enforce things in the area, the speeding, the illegal parking, and all those sorts of things. So I had three solutions here. The owners also own number 25 Maidstone Park Road, which could be turned into a parking lot to save their restaurant, because town code tells us they need off-site parking to the tune of a minimum of about 29, 30 cars. So you're not going to get away with using our neighborhood as the de facto parking without addressing the deficiencies in the site plan, the town codes, and the state law. So we've asked the state troopers to come down and help us. If the town police won't, and the reality is, we're going to keep going here. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we need your help. So maybe if Mr. Councilman Helder Piedmont could, I guess, share the emails I've sent to him about the concerns with a thoroughly outline. And we'd like some help. We want some results. It's been three years. This is ongoing too long. So either please solve the problem by creating the parking lot, or buy it with CPF funds, or in the ultimate reality, if the safety issues aren't concerned, you need to take it by eminent domain and put a bicycle back there. So you have some hard work to do. Please do it. Thank you for letting me comment. You have a nice day.
Thank you, Martin. Jason, is there anyone else on the line?
We have no other callers on the line.
Okay. I'm just going to ask one more time in the room. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? All right, so we're going to move on to our topics. First up is bids with our Senior Purchasing Agent, Jeannie Carosa. Welcome, Jeannie.
Good morning. Good morning. Few acceptances and a couple of notices. The first acceptance is for our annual drainage contract, A, B, and C. Keith Grimes is the apparent low bidder for all. Contract A and B are both $260,575. Contract C, $297,600. A, B, and C are just the different zones that they are. Next is the East Hampton Town Police Department Dispatch Room renovations. Ronald Webb Builder is the apparent low bidder at $791,875. Next is a bid that we did for CDCH IA Sanitary System. The apparent low bidder for that one is Clear River Environmental Service in the amount of $116,250. Next, we did another IA system installation for the Montauk Police Substation. Keith Grimes is the apparent low bidder for that in the amount of $138,425. Next, there's a couple of notices on Cantwell Court Subdivision Lot Clearing Project. And then next week will be a notice for the advertising concessions at services at the airport. And then finally, an RFP was done for Sustainable Planning in Coastal Communities Risk Reduction Revitalization and Restoration. And Samantha Klein is here for the recommendation for this project.
Great. Thank you, Jeannie. Morning, Sam.
Morning. Thank you. Thanks for having me. So the RFP that Jeannie just mentioned, it's a project funded by the New York State Department of State in the amount of $600,000. That was the largest grant award given to Long Island under that program. This project aims to protect and revitalize the Montauk Sustainable Planning Project Study Area to achieve sustainable revitalization that supports a year-round resilient community. That study area includes downtown Montauk, goes north to Industrial Road, the Montauk Fire Department, as well as the Montauk Playhouse. The study area incorporates a lot of community assets. It has two of the focus areas of the Coastal Assessment Resiliency Plan, known as CARP. So they were identified as having high vulnerabilities to climate hazards. It also includes the commercial and resort district in downtown Montauk, which is a major economic driver for the South Fork and even broader New York region. The awarded consultant will provide the town with written codes that are well-positioned for adoption through having been developed with the community, driven by climate and economic data, and assessed legally through all the tasks of the project. Land use policies can be an important tool in balancing sustainable growth and function with environmental preservation in a way that can reflect the needs of a community. So this project has a normal potential to open with great community visioning processes and take thoughtful steps to create implementable actions. The town will be the driver of the project and is using the $600,000 grant to hire a multidisciplinary consultant team. They're going to utilize their expertise and resources to conduct regulation assessments, climate modeling, economic modeling, lead stakeholder engagement, and public education plans, draft options for local codes, create a recommendations report, facilitate collaboration with our municipal boards, and believe it or not, even more other task items, which we'll dive into the details of at a later presentation when I have a full slide deck and everything. To hire the consultants, the town drafted RFP 2025-104. That was drafted to be in alignment with the town's work plan with the Department of State. We included sections on challenges of the study area and priorities of the project. A selection committee was established to review and evaluate those proposals. From the town staff, members included myself and the Town Planning Director, Tina Villas-Lagaron, will be the town's project managers overseeing the consultants and serving on advisory committees, liaising to the town board, coordinating with the grant people, as well as with the consultants. A selection committee also included our project partners. So representatives were Leo Daunt, the President of the Montauk Chamber of Commerce. The chamber's anticipated involvement was written into the grant since the application in 2023. Their organization has critical stakeholders in this area. And it's also for consistency that they were very involved with the CARP study, serving on that committee, as well as a part of the Nature Conservancy's Community Consensus Building Project. The town's other partner represented is Allison Brinko. She is the Climate Adaptation Director of the Nature Conservancy in New York. TNC is an organization that leads environmental work really on a global stage. She was the co-chair on the CARP committee for many years, helping advance that project. We view her role as likely being similar on this one. We also included Jennifer Carney-Iakono, who's the President of the Montauk Playhouse Community Center Foundation, and Andrew Harris, who is a Montauk resident, as well as a representative from the town's waterfront advisory committee. So that's six of us selection committee members. In addition to Jeannie Carosa really overseeing this whole process of procurement, Councilwoman Rogers, serving as our Town Board liaison, as well as the Deputy Town Attorney advising us at some of these meetings. The town received five responses to the RFP. We independently reviewed all these proposals, sent scores to the town's purchasing agent. We then discussed collaboratively, shortlisted four of those teams to bring them in for interviews. We provided those teams with questions ahead of the interviews, so that way we can procure an equal amount of information from all the teams to evaluate them from. And then we sent updated scores to the purchasing agent, and then collaboratively discussed all these at a follow-up meeting. So through this process, we're happy to make a recommendation to the Town Board that we would like them to hire James Lima Planning and Development, abbreviated as JLPD. Some of the reasons why we thought they stood above the others, to be honest, all the proposals were really excellent, and we took a long time to deliberate on them. There wasn't ever a wrong choice. It was just about trying to advise on who the best choice was. So their proposal was very strongly written. We thought they matched well the town's RFP, which is a direct reflection of our work plan with the Department of State. So it's good that those would all be cohesive. And while it clearly matched those, it wasn't a regurgitation of the information we had given them. So they had scored well in project understanding. They discussed goals of creating implementable actions, a community-supported and co-created plan, integrating best available climate and economic modeling data, and working with nature, not against it. They have proven success in related projects, which included the Nature Conservancy's Community Consensus Building Study, and some of the engagement efforts related to the Montauk Playhouse renovation. Their project leads have positive references from those projects that are actually the same project leads that are going to be a part of this project based on their proposal. They also had some impressive renderings and examples related to the project scope. Specifically, one of their subcontractors did work in Nantucket, which has kind of a similar look environmentally and development-wise to Montauk. So they were able to show some examples of that. They also had innovative ideas for stakeholder mapping, that some groups will just need to be informed, others will need to be informed and given an opportunity for feedback, and some need a seat at the table throughout the whole thing. They also have knowledge of resilient zoning and land use tools, experience with DOS-funded projects, and experience on codes in New York City. In conversation, they were also on board of serving as an extension of the town's goals and expertise, and vice versa, that we want to be an extension of their work and stewards of the project in general. So, yeah, so I think, yes, we also touched on some of the challenges ahead with this project that are mixed with a great opportunity we have for advancing resiliency work. So we were thinking about the town's Coastal Assessment Resiliency Plan. I know a lot of, the majority of this Town Board served as a liaison to that committee at one point or another, came to public workshops, and ultimately made sure that that document was adopted. So I think there's plenty of us that can speak to the difficulties that that project faced, but also to its widespread recognition, that there were a lot of requests from notable organizations that invited the town to share information about that project. And they included NOAA, New York State Flood Plane Managers Association, New York Association of Conservation Commissions, among other groups. I think this project is going to be similar in facing and addressing significant challenges, but to some degree, the measure of an accomplishment is in what it took to get there. So we think that this project has a lot of potential, and the grant really represents an enormous opportunity. In conversations with the company JLPD and through evaluating their written proposal, I think their team understands that as well, which means that we'll be able to work with someone that's pragmatic, but also optimistic, which can be a pretty tough balance to strike. So we're looking forward to working with them, and ultimately, this is all up to the Town Board. So we're happy to provide any additional information about the process or the team. Yeah, and I think that is everything.
Questions or comments for Sam?
Just mostly comments. I mean, I think, look, this is a vital project. It's also incredibly complex. I mean, I think, you know, ensuring we have adequate community feedback from all stakeholders, I think is key here. I think the committee has been well-formed in selecting this group, you know, as the project moves forward. I would like to see the outreach get wider and, you know, involve more institutions. I also think with projects like this, you kind of hit on one of the key words, it's pragmatic. You know, there's a lot of industry down there that, you know, just anecdotally, I know is resistant to any kind of change. And, you know, understanding and engaging those partners to ensure we make the right next steps that work for them is going to be key. So it's, like, this is a critical project, one I'm fully behind. I think it does need clear strategy and clear thinking, and I look forward to what they bring forward.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No, I'm just, you know, witnessing the selection committee's diligence to following correct procedures, being completely unbiased and looking at things, each individual proposal on its merits and nothing else, really was an outstanding and exemplary job that in a selection process. And I can say, we did get very good proposals for this project. We had a wealth to choose from. So the selection committee took their time. Nothing was rushed, and it was a collaborative effort. So I can attest to the great work of this team.
I'm supportive as well. I think it's an important project, and I think, Tom, and you brought up good points, which is, I think we need buy-in from everybody. And so I think the outreach has been good so far. The selection committee obviously did a lot of work, but I think going forward, we'll have to make sure, it's in everybody's best interest to participate in this, but I think we just want to make sure that we go out of wedded. And I'm not implying that anybody isn't doing that, but just so that everybody's on board and we can move forward.
So as I understand, next steps, we've got a resolution on for Thursday night to hire James Lima Planning and Development. And then that has to go to the Department of State for final approval, does it not, Sam?
So the resolution is able to be passed by the board. Then, once we're at the agreement stage, the state would like to see a draft of that before it's final. So the agreement...
So they don't have a say in who we hire. They just want to see the agreement that we enter into.
Exactly. Their say in who we hire is more about our process to get there. So they wanted to make sure we procured the consultant fairly.
Great. And then just for folks that are interested, on the town's website, under work session materials for today, is the James Lima's response to the RFP. So it's hundreds of pages, and it's all posted up there. And then that's great. Well, thank you, Sam.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so next up, we have a presentation from the Springs Food Pantry. Holly, we're excited to have you here today and talk about the good work that you're doing for folks in our community that find themselves in a situation where they're, you know, food insecure.
Thank you for having us. And for those who don't know me, I am Holly Reichart Wheaton, and I'm the Director and Chairperson of the Springs Food Pantry. It means a lot for us to be able to come here today and share our story with you.
So Patrick's going to run the PowerPoint, and if you just need him to change the page, just give him the high sign. He's just pulling it up now.
We're loading.
And we also have the video ready to go on our side if you need it.
Great. Thank you, Jason. Here we go.
The Springs Food Pantry started in 1992, when my mom, Betty Reichart, and a few folks from the Springs Community Presbyterian Church noticed their neighbors were struggling, mostly fishermen and farmers. So they literally opened their cupboards and shared what they had, and that's how it all began. Five years later, after working in Chicago, I returned home to Springs, and I started helping my mom at the pantry, and I've been there ever since. We grew slowly, but by 2018, the need was rising fast. Our numbers were increasing, but so was our need for funds to pay the food products. And even though we remain a mission of the Springs Presbyterian Church today, the decision was made to incorporate, to become financially independent, and form our own 501(c)(3) to raise funds more effectively. Our mission's simple: provide healthy supplemental food to Springs families, all of those in need. We've always been 100% volunteer-driven, no salaries, just neighbors helping neighbors. Everyone knows the Hamptons for wealth, but the picture in Springs is very different. We're a hamlet of about 9,500 people, mostly working-class families, construction, landscaping, cleaning, restaurant workers. And a third of our residents are Latino. The cost of living here is brutal. Over 13% of the families live below the federal definition of poverty. But according to the Suffolk County's Welfare-to-Work Commission, that real number is considerably higher, because the federal threshold doesn't reflect the high cost of living on the East End. Child poverty in Springs is double the state average. Spring School doesn't have a cafeteria, so there's no federally funded breakfast or lunch program. It all adds up. About 1,200 of our neighbors rely on the pantry every week, which matches that 13% figure exactly. And as winter approaches, those numbers grow considerably. In fact, just this past Wednesday, we fed almost 1,300 people, and winter's not upon us. I frequently get asked, why do all these families need food? To illustrate, we created a model using reliable sources like the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the IRS, the Census, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, ZipRecruiter, PSENG, and others. All of these resources are listed in our appendix. We modeled a typical Springs family of four: dad a subcontractor, mom a cleaning professional. They make around $9,500 a month, about $120,000 a year. Sounds like a pretty solid income. But their costs, rent, utilities, transportation, taxes, and groceries, add up to more than $10,200 a month. That's nearly an $800 shortfall every single month. The pantry helps fill that gap. For a family of four, we provide about $61 a week in food, roughly $325 a month at retail value. That doesn't erase the deficit, but it makes survival possible. Our budget is about $1.2 million a year. Over 90... Over 90% goes directly to food. The rest is basic overhead: insurance, rents, accounting. We now have an 11-member volunteer board, each with defined roles: purchasing, volunteer coordination, fundraising, technology, financial support, secretarial, et cetera. Takes about 60 volunteers a week to make this all work, and our volunteers are incredible. They show up rain or shine, always with a smile on the face, and they're willing to do any task that we ask them, and many have become donors. Every recipient registers with us. They must show proof of Springs residency and have ID for every family member. We track everything with PantrySoft, so we know who we're serving, how often, and what's needed. And then each week, we build menus, source food, and plan down to the very last item that goes in the bag, to stretch every dollar and to minimize waste. The real story is in this graph. We serve 20 to 30 families a week for years, and by 2019, that number was about 55 families. And then COVID hit, and our numbers skyrocketed. Now more than 330 families, over 1,200 people every week, and the numbers have never dropped back down. Every Wednesday, cars line up from 1:30 to 6:30 in the afternoon. About 86% of our families are Ecuadorian, and they tell us fresh produce matters most. So we make sure that fresh produce is given to every one of our recipients every week. We scale bags to family size: A bags for families of 1 to 3, B bags for families of 4 to 6, and C bags for our 7-plus family members. And yes, we have family members. We have families that total 8, 9, 10, and 11 family members. Meat and dairy are per person, we pack it on the fly, and when school's in session, fruit is packed as a grab-and-go for kids. If someone can't get to the food pantry, we deliver. And if we run out of an item, no one leaves empty-handed. We give IGA gift cards for the same value. Our partners make this possible. Our farmers donate produce in season, businesses provide discounts or services, media partners help us get the word out, especially for fundraising. And it's all about stretching the dollars, and every partnership adds value to our families. We run weekly distributions plus the home deliveries. In summer, we run a summer lunch program to help busy, working parents keep their kids fed. We've partnered with Ola and Sevedra and Perez for Latino community counseling. And during COVID, we teamed up with Northwell Health to bring mobile vaccinations to the pantry. And we're now beginning to work with Planned Parenthood to bring mobile services to our recipients. The pantry's a gateway. People come for food, but they leave with connections to help, education, and support. Most of our funding comes from individual donors, through holiday drives, spring appeals, recurring gifts, and social media. Food grants from Long Island Cares and Island Harvest and other state and federal programs help us with shelf staple items. Our events are vital, too: our Summer Garden Party, our Chowder Chowdown, and our Chili Chowdown. This year's Summer Garden Party was our best yet, raising over 60% more than last year. That community support keeps us going. We especially want to thank the town for your support. Your grant doesn't just buy food, it closes the gap for Springs families. And without it, we probably have to turn people away. Numbers tell one story, but stories bring it home. Janine is a Springs mom, a former recipient, and now a successful small business owner. She gives back as a donor and a volunteer. Janine represents the cycle of dignity and resilience we see time and time again. Let's listen to what Janine has to say.
We're going to pause the, we're going to stop the screen share for a second, and then I'm just going to go full screen on our side. It's going to be a lot easier for everyone, all right? And transitioning over--
And then suddenly it changed, and I lost my job. And all of a sudden, I found myself not being able to pay my bills, and even putting food on the table was a struggle. Cried because I was so embarrassed. I thought people would be judging me, but my kids needed food. So I'd get out of my car each week, walked in. The women and the volunteers that were there always met me with a big smile, no judgment. And most times, they would follow me back out to the car, and somebody would give me an extra bag of food, or an extra dozen eggs, or an extra loaf of bread, whatever it is that they could spare. And I cried some more, and then I drove home, and I tried to feed my kids. And it was a very dark part of my life that is still sometimes hard to think about. But I got through it. For us and my family, it definitely is a full circle moment, for sure. If you can give to the Springs Food Pantry and put it on your list of organizations and put it on the top of your list, because so many people need it, and those people could be you someday. So when you're driving past the line at the Springs Food Pantry on pickup day, and you see a new car, or you see someone who looks relatively well-dressed, try to hold back the judgment, because you really do not know what's happening on the other side.
Thank you, Janine. Our biggest challenge is funding. Nearly every dollar we raise, we spend. We need to increase our recurring donations. And eventually, we'd like to establish an endowment for future stability. As we grow, we're hitting the limits of our space as well. We may no longer, we may need longer hours and additional distribution days, but both require resources. And that's why continued and increased support is so important. On behalf of our board, our volunteers, and the family we serve, thank you. Thank you for having us today. We believe that no one should go hungry. Our dream is to, one day, not be needed, but every Springs family can afford life's basics. But until then, we'll keep showing up. I hope this presentation demonstrates our escalating need for your partnership and increased support. We've added two slides in the appendix, which illustrate our analysis for a family of four, as well as our process for weekly food purchasing. Again, thank you. Thank you for your time. And I welcome any questions you have.
Thank you, Holly.
Well, firstly, I want to say thank you. I mean, what you guys do as volunteers is phenomenal, and it's appreciated in the community massively. I will say that I wish it didn't have to exist.
Yeah.
You know, I wish that we had adequate affordable housing and that employees were paid at a level that allowed them to shop at grocery stores and get what they need. So, you know, I think on our end, we're working on some pieces to fix that with housing, you know, but it's, it's a challenge. You know, I think my key question for you really is, is that we saw this big spike after COVID, and we haven't seen that go back down.
No.
And what do you think is really kind of the reasoning behind that? What's, what are you hearing on the ground for that?
Inflation. I mean, the cost of everything is going up, housing is through the roof, our utilities are through the roof, groceries are through the roof, and salaries just aren't keeping up. I mean, it's impossible to have two, I mean, you think about two, two incomes in the family, and they can't make ends meet. I mean, it's incredible.
Yeah. Thank you.
So I also want to thank you and the organization, and I also want to thank the elders and the deacons at the Springs Presbyterian Church, because without, without a roof over the head, you know, the pantry wouldn't be successful. And I understand limitations on size of that beautiful historical building, and too. You run this like a business, and it, that's wonderful to see. You know, we see the good on it, but for yourself, and having a leader like yourself that use PantrySoft and other mechanisms to track this, and too, and to be able to answer the questions sometimes of cynics, and be able to also put in a format of outreach like you just did.
Right.
Don't be judging, just be thankful and help out.
Absolutely.
That's what volunteerism is needed, then, too. I think the food pantry and the users of the food pantry are lucky to have you as their leader.
Thank you. Takes a village, though. Takes a village.
It's nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Holly, I don't think we can thank you and your volunteers enough, your mother for founding this effort, for seeing the need. You know, when we, we talk about working families in this town, who, to me, are the backbone of our economy and our community, and the need, and how they're getting squeezed. And again, the emphasis on, these are working families that can't meet their needs. So I can't think of what, what our community would be like without you, without, without the ability to help people eat a basic, a basic human right. So I thank you so much, and I thank you for, in your presentation, pointing out specifically who you serve and, and the amount of folks that you serve, because this is something we need the community, the broader community to really understand, and then reach into their own pockets and help out in any way that they can as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I agree with, with all the previous board members. I think that, I wish that there wasn't this need and that everybody was well off and able to, to feed their families, but clearly, there's a need here that you guys are stepping in to fill. I also think there's an example with, I see the volunteers there, and I know you and Kira, and it's one of the lovely things about our community, that there's people who want to give back and help support. You know, at our heart, we're still a very small town with a close-knit community, which is why I've fallen in love with this place over the last, last 20 years. All of that said, all of the good intentions and wanting to serve doesn't go anywhere without a really strong organization, and I've, I've seen you guys grow and the work that you and Kira Bandman do to, you know, take donations from all different places and somehow assemble it in a way that works for the recipients as well. And that's way more complicated than I think anybody realizes, and I think you deserve a lot of credit and, and for how, how professionally you run that operation. I also want to give a shout out to Bill Sullivan, who I know does a lot of delivery driving for you guys, and I think he's, you know, an example, somebody I know who really always shows up with a smile and facilitates things happening. And you've got a lot of people like that. I just happen to know Bill personally, so I wanted to say that. And as Dave mentioned, the church, I think so many people make this happen. And as you've said and others, I think that we should all be very careful not to judge. You know, it's, it's hard for anybody to doubt that people need to eat and have good food available, and I think that we should put that way higher than any sort of skepticism of, does this person need it, or are they sort of gaming the system? There's a need out there, and I'm so happy that you guys are there to help fill it.
Thanks, Ian. Thank you. And I'm just going to give a plug to our Chowder Chowdown, which is coming up. So it's October 11th, mark your calendars, and we're going to have it at the Springs Tavern on the patio this year. So come have fun and sample chowder from, I think I've got 21 chefs. So it'll be fun.
Holly, if anyone wants to, sorry. If anyone wants to reach out to the Springs Food Pantry with donations, of services, financial, how would they contact you?
You can go on our website, which is springsfoodpantry.com, and they, in fact, look at our website, because there's more than Janine on there, or the testimonial. And we're trying to bring more of that into the fold, so people understand, you know, that it's everyday people who are using our pantry. We don't have a lot of seniors. What we have is, Kathy said, working-class people are out there needing our services. But they can go on the website, our phone number's on there. There's also a volunteer signup sheet on there, so they can sign up that way, and my phone number, so they can always call me.
Holly, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so next up, we're going to get a presentation and an update from the folks from Family Service League. So Jeff Steigman, Carol McGee, come on down. Another longtime partner with the town, Family Service League.
Absolutely. It's wonderful to be here and to talk about this, you know, great initiative that's really been in place for 10 years. I'm Jeff Steigman. I'm the chief strategy officer of Family Service League. We're the largest not-for-profit community behavioral health organization in Suffolk County, and we have over 60 programs in 20 different sites throughout Suffolk. And behavioral health is our largest division. And I'm joined by Carol McGee, who is the clinic director at our East Hampton site and is a vital program for the town. Next slide, please. So just to give you a little context, a little backdrop, so the South Fork Initiative really has been a proverbial game changer in terms of where we were, you know, 10 years prior and where we are now. And what I always say, I mean, it's, one, it's a highlight of my career, and I've been in this field for about 30 years, or, you know, definitely one of the highlights, and it really is an example of what a public-private partnership can accomplish. And, and I say that in terms of our partners have been New York State and local governments, including the town of East Hampton, local school districts, hospital systems, and ourselves, really working together to make sure that there's access, real-time access, to needed mental health care when it is needed, and that's the key. It was an initiative that was started by Assemblyman Thiel and Senator Laval, and Senator Plumbbo has championed it since, and then obviously Assemblyman Giovanni. So it unfortunately grew out of tragic suicides at our local high schools, and at that point, really a lack of accessible services for treatment years ago. And, you know, there were wait lists, and there were months, you know, long, and really were not able to provide services when they were needed. Next slide, please. So, you know, in the past, and particularly after the unfortunate incidents, it was a very reactive system. You know, when there was any, any concern, there was the, that was evident in the schools, what would happen is that children would be transported to Stony Brook Psychiatric Emergency Program, usually by police transport, so that's about 60 miles away. They were handcuffed, put in a, in a setting that was often traumatizing. They were separated, you know, from their families, behind locked doors, and they often didn't need to be there. So really, that was our charge. How can we come up with a better system to really address the needs of those in crisis? The initial phase definitely focused on the crisis situation, but over time, it grew to linkage in general, not just a crisis. Who, you know, whether it's students or families, how can we bring services when they're needed to those individuals? The success has been overwhelming. We have, you know, significantly diverted the need to send children to the hospitals. We respond the same day when there's a crisis, and, you know, thanks to Carol and her team, we will arrange for, you know, it's a real streamlined referral pathway, and we will see that individual that day. And overwhelming majority of the cases, we're able to determine that they do not need a hospital setting. We can provide any services in the moment and ongoing and come up with any safety plan that's needed, et cetera. So, you know, there really has been a reduction in those transports. Given the success of the model, it has been replicated, so subsequently, we really created the same model and re-engineered the system on the North Fork. So they're really, at this point, it's a North Fork Initiative as well as a South Fork Initiative. Next slide, please.
So this slide shows referrals that came directly from the schools. So as you, from January till June of this year. So as you can see, Amagansett School referred two children to us: East Hampton, 57; Hampton Bays, 15; Montauk, 4; Sag Harbor, 14; Southampton, 23; Springs, 30, and Tuckahoe didn't have to send anyone. The, the other column shows the number of services, which means the number of sessions, therapeutic or psychiatric sessions or group sessions that all of those children and adolescents received at our clinic. And this shows all of the referrals. So, you know, we get referrals from, you know, the families, PCP, other community resources. So it shows that the number, of course-- So it shows that the number, of course, is larger, so East Hampton has sent us the most referrals, 230, but Amagansett 13, Bridgehampton 9. We even get referrals from Flanders, 37, Hampton Bays 88, Montauk 32, Quag 19, Sag Harbor 52, Sagaponic 4, Southampton 80, Wayne Scott, I think that's 9, Watermill 7, West Hampton 11, and West Hampton Beach 13. And of course, the number of services is much larger, because people are seeing, kids are seen at least once a week initially, sometimes more, and if they're in a group, they'll be seen twice a week, and if they see the doctor as well, that's three times. We also get referrals, well, the first, the third column shows when adolescents or children from the town, the South Fork towns went to DASH or reached out to the Mobile Crisis Team. And I can't see all those numbers.
It's like a DMVI chart, right?
Next slide. That's you again.
So Carol, can I just ask you a question? So for like East Hampton, where we see 230, if yours, you live in Springs, but you go to East Hampton High School, it's probably tracked as East Hampton High School. So because East Hampton High School is a receiving district, it's...
Right, so when it's broken down to Montauk and Springs, that's, you know, when they're in grade school.
Right.
And then as soon as they all come together, it's East Hampton.
Yeah, and just to be clear on your headings, this is only for a six-month period, January through June.
Just from January to June of this year.
So, you know, as the years, you know, have evolved, you know, we really try to figure out how we can innovate and how can we bring services in different ways. And one of the things that we have been engaged with, with the town of East Hampton, as well as other town and village police departments, is Carol had mentioned DASH. DASH stands for Diagnostic Assessment and Stabilization Hub. It is located in the Hopgog Industrial Park, but it is the first intensive crisis stabilization center in the region, and actually, the state has worked with us, so state partners are replicated throughout New York State, and it actually is in the process. Other crisis stabilization centers are opening up, but again, a very diversionary model, try to avoid the need to go to a hospital. But what we did, beginning in October of '22, is worked with the police departments out here to reduce any barriers. So rather than, you know, there were some times where it may take a while for a mobile crisis team to get there or to expect someone to come to a particular setting. So what we did is that we, since we opened the stabilization center, we always had a dedicated law enforcement line, and any officer can call that line, and we will be able to initiate a, through our electronic medical record, a telehealth session. So we're providing that evaluation while the officer is responding to a 911 call if it relates to a behavioral health issue, mental health or substance use. And we are workers in Hopgog, who are all licensed professionals, are able to provide that assessment, crisis assessment, to determine the best disposition. And that has also been, you know, a game changer, just in terms of bringing the services to where they're needed, at the right setting, you know, at the right time. And, you know, from January to June, again, a six-month period, 118 children and adults have been, from the South Fork have been assessed. Really want to highlight that 81% of those assessments did not result in transport. So when you think about that, that really is a savings from a system standpoint, because you're not taking officers out of their sector, they're not going all the way to the hospital, and the individual can stay in their community and figure out how to engage with what they So 69% were managed right through the actual telehealth assessment, 5% came to DASH, even though it was, you know, it's, you know, somewhat of a trek, they came to our Hopgog site, and 5% of our mobile crisis team came out and assessed them in person. So our mobile crisis team serves the whole county as well as the stabilization center.
So Jeff, you gave a presentation a few months back to the East End Supervisors and Mayors Association, and you were accompanied with three police chiefs from East End departments. Do you want to, just so folks can understand what it looks like, you know, somebody gets pulled over or they go to someone's home and they're in crisis, exactly how that works?
Yeah, so, I mean, there were so many varied examples, but it could be, it could be a wellness check, it could be someone who is grossly symptomatic, it could be someone who is extremely depressed or anxious, someone's worried about them. So, you know, a lot of times, it may emanate from a 911 call, officer responds. Oftentimes, and I would say the vast majority, it is not a clear-cut decision for the officer. So they have, in the past, been placed into that de facto position of being a social worker or a substance counselor and having to make a decision whether they should be taken to the hospital, are they at imminent risk or not? They didn't like that position. Oftentimes, it resulted in kind of a reflexive, well, I don't want to make this decision, let me just take them to the hospital, let the professionals make that decision. So here, we're able to do that assessment, right, because they called, they called the mobile crisis team, and we're able to work with them in collaboration, and they will stay on scene until we say, you know what, this is okay, we have this, we can continue, you can go back to your patrol. It has been extremely successful, and it really has been, you know, the outcomes are the most important, but it's also been really a system saver, just in terms of really, you know, realigning the resource to where they're needed. But there are, you know, there are some situations, you know, 19%, where we may concur that this person would be best served at a hospital setting. But when you think about that, 81% of the time, they don't have to. And then it's not just that we're providing the risk assessment, because that's most important. So whether someone comes to DASH, whether we do this over the phone or through telehealth, we're looking to make sure that there's not a revolving door. So we don't want to deal with just a crisis, we want to figure out what's missing. Are they, are they in treatment, are they willing to, you know, engage in treatment? Do they need a different level of care? Do they need, you know, more social determinants of health in terms of food? Do they need assistance with housing and other, you know, psychosocial issues? So we really are trying to figure out what's the root of the issue and how do we really prevent this from, you know, kind of continuing into the future? So hopefully that answers your question?
Yeah, no, and you're connecting them to services, and that could be to a social worker at, you know, the East Hampton...
East Hampton Clinic, it could be Matto, but yes, correct.
All right, so real quickly, obviously, we know the dire stats in terms of increases in mental health struggles, substance use struggles, and, you know, for kids, those with the serious emotional disturbances, anywhere from 13 to 20%, probably even a little bit higher now, you know, post-COVID. And serious emotional disturbances really can be defined as, you know, significantly impact their functioning. And obviously, it affects not only the individual, you know, the youth, but also their family. And we know if care is available when needed, and we can engage someone and their family successfully, the outcomes are, you know, unassailable in terms of decrease in the actual symptoms, it could be a reduction in suicidal thoughts or behavior, decrease in behavioral issues, improvement in academic performance, et cetera. So the evidence is there, obviously, and, you know, I always say, you can't stress enough, you want to be proactive, you don't want to be reactive, you want to be able to move upstream as much as possible and deal with things earlier on than later, right? Next slide, please.
Okay, so Carol's going to talk a little bit about the services at the East Hampton Clinic.
Yeah, so we talk a lot about crisis, but we do assessments whenever anyone comes to the clinic, you know, for possibly seeking a treatment. So we do, we do depression assessments, anxiety assessments, assessments for substance abuse, trauma, the list goes on and on. So we do, we do an initial assessment, and then the, not all children are seen by the psychiatrist. If the parents say to us, we're not at all interested in medication, or we don't determine that the child needs medication, they don't necessarily see the psychiatrist, but all adults do, at least once. They don't have to be seen on an ongoing basis if they don't want medication, but they're all seen once. And then we do individual, group, family, couples, in ongoing psychotherapy, and we offer medication management. We also have, we have, remember, we're kind of a small clinic, so we don't have a lot of individuals that come to us, have injectable psychotropics, but we have some, and we do We do a lot of community outreach with parents and ongoing psychoeducation with parents. We have a Spanish-speaking therapist that can communicate to the parents in their native language, which is extremely helpful. And that's enough of that, next.
Could you just talk a little bit about that program?
Christina Jimenez, who is our Spanish-speaking therapist, is at the high school every Wednesday. And she has a caseload of about 14 that she sees at the high school, and in the summer, she just brings them over to the clinic. And it's very, it works really well. The school is very happy with our arrangement with them, because the kids can go to the guidance counselor or to a teacher and say, I, you know, I help, I need help, and Christina's right there. And so, and so it's very accessible.
That's great. Questions for Carol or Jeff?
Yeah, Carol, I mean, we've worked together a little bit through the East Hampton Youth Task Force, and, you know, I recall, I think it was the last meeting, I think, beginning maybe of last year, but, you know, we had the warning from the Surgeon General at the time, which is that, look, there is a mental health crisis amongst our youth, and fundamentally, it's been driven largely by social media, among other things, and, you know, I think the recent banning of cell phones in school, I'm interested to hear if any of your students have had kind of any feedback on that and any positive correlations. I know it's still kind of relatively early days, but to kind of keep work, notice on that. But, you know, also, I think, you know, just as board members, I want us to kind of emphasize to the public, like, that mental health issues, there should not be stigmatism attached to them. They are no different to having a cold or cancer or anything like that. The important thing here is to seek help, you know, and to take away that stigmatism for people. So I think that's a critical piece that you guys are doing. I think in the youth, that's really challenging, you know, that it's such a social hierarchy in high schools, so I'm very grateful for the work you do in the schools there. But, you know, I'd be interested to hear for additional ways, you know, beyond the banning of cell phones, that you could kind of think about how to kind of get rid of that stigmatism to some degree. And the last piece is, you know, really just based on conversations we've had in the South Fork Initiative meetings. I think the work you're doing is fantastic, but the one thing that has been called out is that, you know, while telehealth has been really fantastic in giving us some new avenues to get people help when they need it, the relative lack of presence of practiced and qualified professionals in person, on ground, in the East End, remains a challenge for our community out here. So, you know, when, when parents are looking to try to get their kids to see someone in person, that's still a real challenge, I hear from many married parents out there. So I'd love to hear if there's kind of any more initiatives to grow that network of professionals out here who can help children in person.
It is, it is a challenge, it's a, you know, kind of nationwide challenge, but we are embarking on different internal discussions to figure out anything that we can do to attract and recruit professionals, so that there is that ability for as much onsite as possible as well, as well as as many bilingual staff. So your point is well-taken, and we have actually already started some discussions in that area. And, you know, I really want to just also end with where we started in terms of the partnership with the town has been really wonderful, and it's allowed us to really have a foundational level of care that does provide access to these services, but you're right, recruitment is a challenge.
And what about to Tom's questions? I mean, I know it's early with the bell-to-bell, no cell phones, bell-to-bell in the schools, are you, is there any initial?
Absolutely, I hear.
Yeah, I hear that at the schools, yes, and we, we had the superintendents here, I think it was last week, and Adam made a comment that, you know, kids are walking down the hall and they're looking each other in the eye, because, you know, their phone's in a, what, in a bag.
I think we as adults could learn a lot from this experiment, honestly.
I think the adults were more scared of implementing this than the kids are actually reacting to it. They're just like, oh, oh yeah, I have to put it in here now, okay. I bet you a lot of them are relieved.
I know at least one is.
Just one last point, I think it's fantastic what you're doing with DASH and PD on scene. I do think it might be beneficial to do some outreach to the ambulance companies across town, they also have a lot of work they do with these individuals, so, you know, ensuring that they know what access they can get to relative resources when they might need them as well would be great.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and one thing I will add is that, and I know I've spoken to Kathy about this, is that we, you know, would love to be able to find a way to open up a DASH 2, so to speak, on the East End, to really better serve the forks, where it's not such a geographic barrier. So, you know, that's something we would love to be able to do and figure out how to make that happen.
Yeah, there was talk at one time Riverhead, right, as would be a satellite. Yeah, I just want to, and it's, it's an incredibly emotional topic for parents like myself, who were raising children, teenagers in the early 2000s out here, before there was any of these services. And when you take a moment out to think of a person, a young person in a health, in a mental health crisis, being handcuffed and put in a police car and driven 60 miles away, it's cruelty. And so I've seen and experienced families, and in my own family, the availability that you've brought to our town with Family Service League, helped young people so much, so much who were in crisis, and I remember those times too, where those suicides were so tragic. But there was no place to get help here, you had to, even for, if you wanted to do it privately, you were heading at least an hour, at least to Riverhead, which, when a person's feeling depressed and horrible, it just adds, it doesn't, it doesn't help. So I want to thank you so much for starting this, and also, I want to acknowledge you, Kathy, for your efforts in improving mental health services for young people. I wasn't involved politically, but I certainly remember when you, you know, when we would talk, and you would talk about how dire this situation was, and how important it was to get services right here on the ground in East Hampton. So I just want to acknowledge you for that, and certainly acknowledge you for what you do. The difference now between then, it's like the dark ages and coming into the light. You've helped so many young people and people, so thank you so much.
Appreciate that and appreciate the partnership, and we'll continue to look to figure out how we get even further the efforts.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with the previous board members, I think that this is an incredibly important service, and it's, and it's a challenging one to, you know, be in a position to offer. I'm sure it's a, you know, it's a difficult job, and I'm grateful that you're here to fill the need, so thank you.
Thank you both for coming today. Okay, so now we have the Tree Protection Code recommendations, which is going to be presented by members of the Sustainability Committee. I understand, Jane, I think you're running point on the...
I drew this draw.
Okay, short straw. And Anne Marie will be running the presentation, Jane, you'll coordinate with Anne Marie. And as Jane gets set up, I just want to frame this by acknowledging the work of the Sustainability Committee. There are members of the Sustainability Committee here along with Jane today. I'd just like to point them out in the audience, we have Len Green, Marjorie Spitz, Gloria Frazi. These are folks on this committee that have long been dedicated to improving our sustainability across the board in our town. They do a lot of work, they have a lot of discussions, they do a lot of outreach, not always in the spot... Not always in the spotlight, but certainly effective group of people and all doers. So thank you so much for all you do.
Great. Good afternoon, Town Board. I'm Jane Mearing, speaking only as a member of the East Hampton Sustainability Committee today and not in any other capacity. As Kate introduced this session, we're honored to be here to introduce our unanimous committee recommendation that the town of East Hampton consider drafting and adopting what is known as a tree protection ordinance. And I recognize my colleagues here today. Next slide, please. So for warm up, just a bit of tree inspo. You don't get to see Thoreau and Dr. Seuss in the same place, but they're speaking about the trees and their importance. Next slide, please. Okay, here's what we'll cover today. A note there are, as you probably saw, a lot of slides here as we wanted to create a document that would serve as a broader education and reference piece on the topic beyond this specific work session. Not to fear, I'm going to be focusing in depth on only a subset and scrolling through a lot very quickly that you can go back to. Next slide. Okay. Oh, sorry. Let's start with a summary of how this recommendation has come about. Next slide. So at the start of 2025, the Sustainability Committee identified, quote, "sustainable land management" as one of our core action focused areas. As part of that, we voted unanimously to bring forward a recommendation to the Town Board to consider adopting into the town code what is known as a tree protection ordinance, with the purpose of, one, sustaining the crucial benefits trees deliver to our community and ecosystem, and, two, to address the increasing threats to and degradation of trees across the town. Next slide. We're not here today to deliver to you actual draft code. Instead, because a TPO is likely rather unfamiliar to many, our intent right now is to build a solid understanding with the board, key stakeholders in the public, of the purpose of TPOs, how they're structured, implemented, how to establish what we believe, and to establish what we see to be a compelling, quote, "proof of need" for a TPO in East Hampton Town. If the board should agree to move forward with this initiative at another time, we would want to come forward with more specific framework and codes.
You can slow down a little.
I know, I want to.
Not three minutes.
Anyway, with respect to critical need, myriad threats to trees are mounting here in East Hampton, as elsewhere, even as the need to sustain trees grows more urgent. And as science makes very clear, the many essential and existential benefits of trees to health, safety, and well-being of a community. We also hear a lot of concern, I think, are we on this?
Just advance one slide.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, just.
Great.
Okay, great. We hear a lot of concern from residents, I imagine you do too, about tree issues and the need for tree protection. Studying the entire suite of our existing town codes related to clearing and natural resources protection, we've identified a material gap. First, there's nothing in place that requires review or precludes anyone from cutting down individual or groups of valuable trees across properties. And, two, the ability to hold violators accountable to current codes related to clearing and trees appears to be slim to none. Next slide, please. Over the past six months, the Sustainability Committee has done extensive research about trees, has evaluated many actual TPOs in place across other municipalities. We've studied their purpose, value, their array of components, what makes for an effective TPO. And also, we've looked at what can undermine their efficacy. And importantly, how TPOs are resourced and enforced. And by the way, I don't really get into the resourcing issues here, but it will be a very important conversation to have if, if we continue this dialogue. Next slide, please. In recent decades, the purpose of tree protection has evolved. It's expanded from singular lens of, quote, "beautification", to a very full spectrum aesthetic, social, economic, environmental benefits, and ecosystem services. Importantly, there is a much greater understanding now of how accelerating and indiscriminate tree destruction can create many risks and negative outcomes for a place. Next slide. So here's what the research consistently identifies as the crucial benefits of trees, from their canopy spread all the way down to their root systems and the microbial fungal communities they sustain. I'll go through these quickly because these are important to always keep in mind. So there's air quality improvement, water quality protection, climate benefits, ecosystem preservation, erosion control, flood mitigation, wind force dissipation, quality of life and well-being benefits, again, aesthetic value. And there are economic benefits as well. Next slide. I'm going to skip this next one as well. Next slide. Okay, so just wrapping up this intro section, here's a very short general definition of a TPO. Tree protection ordinances are municipal bylaws enacted by local governments to protect trees and other important vegetation by regulating and/or requiring permit for certain tree-related activities and setting required replanting standards commensurate to tree loss. Next slide. Okay, so a tree protection ordinance, they're, they're generally written to coordinate with or support other existing codes. They establish municipal protection over trees on both public lands as well as on private property. They, the purpose and their intent is to prevent the loss and destruction or undue harm of trees, assure restoration of trees if they've been properly removed, sustain and enhance the benefits of trees, prioritize native and keystone species, and importantly, to prevent excessive monocultures, and you'll see them all around town, and to ensure overall that development comports with a place's land use goals. Next slide. I'm going to slip this slide. Yeah, thank you. You're ahead of me. Thank you. No, you can, yeah, perfect. Okay, so moving on, I just want to focus on East Hampton's specific context and the existing conditions we see in town underlying this proposal. Next slide. Look, the top concern we hear consistently from residents is about loss of trees related to development or certain landscaping practices. I'm not calling out everyone. There's just certain things that come up that people see. And also what appears often to be clear cutting or what people consider overclearing. In particular, we hear mounting concern among residents about some, some who appear to exploit or evade what code protections we do have, and a sense that some just, quote, "get away with it" without proper accountability. The Natural Resources Department has indicated that penalties related to improper clearing are not sufficient and has also observed that they're often nullified when issues get to justice court. Next slide. So trees are all our hot topic of conversation. Here's a couple excerpts from some things in the paper. Recently, one highlighting the concept that clear cutting has reached an unsafe tipping point. The other highlighting a poor mindset of many who seem to view trees as, quote, "disposable". There's links, by the way, everything in this presentation is linked. Next slide. Because there's no code in place that establishes a process to assess or permit individual tree protection, mature trees are often removed to make way for expanded amenities, even if there are viable alternatives. Next slide. And again, for your future reference, here are links to just a few other recent examples of tree concerns examined in the local news. You've probably read some of these already. Next slide. Okay. Trees in East Hampton, we find are being threatened by many dynamics. We estimate nearly two thirds of the land in East Hampton is subject to development and clearing of trees. And 100% of our land is susceptible now to natural risks to trees like disease, pests, aggressive deer browsing. Okay, here are the big factors we've identified as clear and present dangers to East Hampton trees. Increasing coverages, ongoing subdivisions, increased commercialization of residential neighborhoods, right-of-way tree risks caused by some of the bigger, lengthier construction projects, something we've talked, have already talked about, improper incursion by property owners into the right-of-ways. Now, this is an interesting one. We have increasing size of the new IAS septic systems fields. We have drainage fields that are getting bigger and solar installations, all very good things. But they do and can require significantly greater loss of trees and create areas that cannot be revegetated. Next slide. Also, there's an incorrect belief that trees should be cut down proactively to prepare for storms. Again, diseases, pests, invasion of invasives, deer, excessive deer browse. There's very aggressive marketing of monocultures and creating misguided mindsets. And finally, widespread allowance for pre-existing non-conforming 100% clearing that exists in this town. Next slide. So this is a conversation more broadly for another time, but, you know, pre-existing, yeah, sorry. Oh, sorry. So following up on that last bullet, we estimate at least 30% of all residential parcels in town allow for perpetual 100% pre-existing non-conforming clearing, and that there is another material percentage of lots that have perpetual pre-existing clearing that exceeds current code allowances. Next slide. Here's just two examples of a constant trend we see in sale listings that push pre-existing 100% clearing status as a big plus. You can see the ads show the existing vegetation, and then they manipulate the, the aerial to wipe out all the trees to, you know, kind of push that as a good idea. Next slide. Board, we know you're all familiar with the presentation Andy Gates gave in 2023, dealing with the significant challenges impacting the town's woodlands. And we factored his information into our analysis as well for the recommendation. Next slide. So all in, we see the pressing need to enhance our town code in a way that provides the utmost protection of native, ecologically valuable, and culturally significant trees, and ensures species diversity across all property. And to address this proof of need, in our advisory capacity, we think a TPO is the best way to address these imperatives. Next slide. So speaking of town code, in this section, we've gathered all the existing, what we find, we think are the existing and related relevant East Hampton town codes in one place. For time's sake, we're not going through all of them, but we'll just highlight some observations here briefly. Next page. Okay, the town code, actually, let's skip this one. Next slide. All right, so let's start with our unique town code defining clearing pictured and linked here. Most important to understand is that if you maintain trees on your property, but you remove some or all of the understory, then those areas beneath the trees are considered and documented as fully cleared. On the other hand, so on one hand, we laud the rigor of this definition. It's pretty cool. But on the other hand, it creates an unintended consequence. It means that in many instances, cutting down trees above this area that's already considered clear doesn't actually increase your documented clearing percentage relative to the maximum allowed. So it kind of undermines the incentive to keep the trees for many people. Next slide. Aside from clearing, here's somewhat the broad town definition of revegetation. It reads a little more like a suggestion rather than a tangible framework for restoration. Next slide. There's also on the books, Chapter 234, Vegetation Protection Ordinance, which appears outdated, lacking important elements like material accountability. And it has no, establishes no jurisdiction related to private property. Next slide. Now, the town does have multiple relevant code sections that, though they don't protect trees directly, we think they provide valuable context and a strong basis for a TPO. These include, of course, aside from the comprehensive plan, the purposes of zoning, and the codified coverage ratios and clearing ratio formulas. Next slide. As you recall, 255-111 was updated not that long ago and enhanced with resilience and sustainability emphasis. And here are some multiple sections that have been added that we also believe do and could support and enable a TPO. Next slide. Okay, this is important, too. The slide summarizes the crucial as-of-right maximum clearing ratios relative to lot size. In summary, it's important to note that per this code and our town lot size distribution, 37% of all residential lots in town potentially can be cleared between 75% and up to 100% of the entire lot. That makes for some very significant amount of overall allowable clearing and potential loss of trees. Next slide. We're going to skip the next one. Skip that. Thank you. Okay, so the last part of this code section is the Natural Resources Protection, which is a subject of two chapters, Chapter 180 and 255. This code enumerates crucial benefits of natural resources to the town, residents, and ecosystem. It delineates all types of natural resources and natural features that the code finds important. And these codes, codes grant certain natural resources oversight to jurisdiction of the zoning board, especially through the Natural Resources Special Permit. Next slide. So in these code sections, in, in these code sections, we find another critical gap. 180 makes clear that, quote, "woodlands and large trees, as well as unique plants and trees, are to be viewed as essential natural resources, and that their, quote, "stewardship preserving, protecting, and conserving" is supposed to be ensured through well resource tracking and oversight. However, next slide. Though the woodlands and trees are delineated, it's important in 180, they are left out of Chapter 255, Sections About Protection of Natural Resources. A gap that we recommend be addressed, and again, suggests, suggests that a TPO would be essential here. Okay, so wrapping up this code, in totality, East Hampton Town has multiple important codes, but still a very significant gap, tree protection. All right, next slide. I'm going to go through, I'm going to leave this to you to, to go through as well, but I'll just delve a bit more substantively into the mechanics of TPOs. So TPOs, obviously, they, they can codify what activities are restricted or prohibited completely, what can take place without overview, and what can take place only with a required permit. They're very flexible. They come in many forms, but mostly, they generally all deal with or bring into the code regulation by a lot, a combination of all these elements. So I'm not going to read them all, but they can regulate by tree size, by age of trees, by various tree parts, by different tree species, by the location of the trees, by the quantity in certain areas during different time periods, by other types of significance, by tree-related actions, by replanting, and by exemptions. I'm going to leave this, I think this is an important slide to come back to if you want to dig into this more. Next slide. We found in a lot of research, reading a lot of papers and, and documents, TPOs are legitimate, legal, and enforceable, and when properly crafted, are shown to be effective in sustaining tree character and tree diversity. Now, opposition or pushback can arise, even though they're legal and enforceable, from some potentially developers or those who insist upon completely unfettered property rights. So education of the community is crucial for support and adoption. And importantly, TPOs can fail if they do not align with other community values or if they're undermined by exemptions and lack of enforcement. Next slide. We'll skip this next slide. Okay, and so, I'm sorry, I'm skipping this slide too. Thank you. Okay, so based on all our research, the most balanced and effective TPOs, as I said, are written to accomplish specific objectives. They're, they have to be developed via a clear and sometimes lengthy and transparent process. The mitigation required for tree removal must be set proportional to the tangible environmental impact of the loss of trees. They need to be applied equitably, enforced evenly, have meaningful penalties. And this, again, the dedicated resources necessary for effective administration cannot be under, underthought. Okay, so a TPO, so it's essential. But without strong community education and mindset evolution, it'll be hard to change destructive or careless behaviors. And I, I think the Sustainability Committee knows, and you, you all know, that luckily, we have important citizen groups that we believe will join us in support to educate and advocate for this initiative. Okay, and then I'm going to skip through this pretty quickly just so we can get to any conversation. So this is the last section. We provide, we provide in this section a quick overview of TPO growth and trends, national, state, local. Next slide. You know, these have been around in the 20th century, since the beginning of 20th century. About half of US communities are estimated to have code that provides for tree protection. Next slide. This is from a paper that's linked here. You can, this shows a big inflection point around 2000 and the number of TPOs adopted by municipalities across the US, and the trend towards setting minimum tree size thresholds. Next slide. She, one of the most important trends has been the extension of TPO jurisdiction from just municipal and public land to encompass private property. And many existing codes that have been in place for a long time, the municipalities are now again improving them and trying to strengthen them and them and trying to strengthen them and add to them. Next slide. By the way, there's been a New York State enabling law since 1987 empowering all municipalities to adopt and enforce local codes that protect trees. It's still in effect. Next slide. I'm sorry. Well, there's also a recent research poll that says that about seventy percent of all New York State municipalities have adopted some form of tree protection ordinance. Next slide. So East Hampton appears to be in a bit of a minority, but I will admit, the South Fork overall, based on our research, has been weak regarding TPOs. However, there's recent South Fork activity that shows increasing desire for codified tree protection. There's been an adoption not that long ago in North Haven, Sag Harbor Village, you probably read about, and Southampton Town is in the midst of drafting some form, probably for their larger lots. Next slide. Leave you to explore these links if you want. Okay, so we're working on a, sorry, next slide. Oh, there it is. I'm sorry. Looking at the wrong thing. We're working on a comparison of TPO codes that establish, of TPO codes that are out there that cover both public and privately owned parcels across thirty New York State municipalities. This benchmarking will supply to you when we're done, and I think it will provide great ideas and alternatives to consider, though it's clear, whatever we do has to be tailored to East Hampton's unique circumstances, the stakeholders in the town, and resources. Next slide. So done, closing out. In summary, the Sustainability Committee recommends beginning the process for the creation and adoption of a meaningful TPO. We assert to you the need for tree protection is proven and the benefits are likely to be meaningful. And this committee seeks support from the town board to continue this dialogue and initiate a formal drafting process for a TPO framework. Thank you. And then there's an index, an appendix that have lots of learning links and links to some of the codes. So that's it.
Yeah, so I just want to acknowledge all the work that this, obviously, that everyone's done on this presentation. It's an encyclopedia of information. It's a lot to absorb. I encourage folks in the community and across here, and I think also I'd like to bring this to town departments. I know Natural Resources has been in this, but bringing this idea. But for me, you know, looking at the list of communities that have tree protection codes, it certainly is something that we can take a hard look at, and I believe we should continue to take a hard look at and further these presentations. And I support this process. We have, we've learned so much from when our clearing code was written, you know, and Len will tell me that I have to understand also how important the leaves on the ground are as well to our ecosystem. And I don't dispute that, but just for context, when our clearing regulations are very restrictive, and the unintended consequence of that restrictedness, where if you rake leaves, that area, if you rake leaves out from under your trees, that's considered clear. And now those trees can be taken down without increasing any type of clearing. So while when we wrote these clearing regulations past boards had the best intentions, and we're trying to do what now I think in a targeted approach would be a better way to do it, it does have this unintended consequence. And that's really, again, just want to acknowledge all the work that went into this hard look by this committee. And just please take a look at all the communities on Long Island that have tree protection codes. We're certainly not blazing a trail. That's, well, that's a bad terminology. We're certainly not looking at things that haven't already been assessed and adopted in many other places. That's it for me.
Do other members of the Sustainability Committee want to address the board on the presentation? Len?
I'm Leonard Green. I'm a member of the Sustainability Committee, and I'm East Hampton resident for the last thirty years. I'll be brief because Jane's been very encyclopedic, I think, and very thorough. I just want to say that trees are a community resource, and we need to treat them as such. That is, I think it's, you know, as I walk around, I see every day, every day when I take my walks, trees that have been taken down for reasons that are hard to understand. I see often properties that are literally clearcut despite the fact that we have protections that should prevent that. So I think it's imperative that we recognize the importance of trees in the sustainability of our, well, for biodiversity, for hydrology, for the health of our aquifer, that these are not simply disposable objects that should be left to the whim of individual choice and decision. So that's all I have to say. I really deeply appreciate your taking time to consider this and hope that we'll be able to move forward.
Thank you, Len.
Hello, I'm Marjorie Spitz. And I just want to remind everybody, because there's a lot of technical information here and rescinding everything that's already been said, but this beauty of the trees, and it's so hot, right? Just think about what it feels like when there's no trees, there's no shade, you know, on a hot day in our communities here. And the community needs to understand, I'm a bit of a halianna. I tend to believe that a lot of people just don't understand what they're doing when they're clearing those trees. They're trying to make their property what they think is beautiful, but they might not understand that what they're doing is they're taking away what part of this community is about and the beauty of this community. So just implore the, you know, the board here to think about what's been said, to continue this conversation, ask any questions, and recognize the impact on the environment, and to tweak some of the language so that the unintended consequences don't become consequences that we cannot reverse, given what's going on, the climate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think an underlying theme in Jane's presentation, in all of today's presentations, also Len and Marjorie both said the words "community." And we've heard today from Family Services, which just does so much amazing work in our community. The Springs Food Pantry, which one of the board members agreed with the presenter saying that it does take a village. It is about community. And one of the things that we do is look at what is the greater good, because we're not just a collection of, or we're not just individuals living in our own thiefdom, in our own property, in our own world. What we do as individuals makes a difference for the entire community. So yes, it is, what can we do on our properties? But just as you're not going to let me dig a sand mine on my property, nor, and destroy it, nor should I be allowed to clearcut my property and destroy another valuable benefit for not just me, but for my community. And when I wake up in the morning, I listen to, how many birds do I hear? I turn on my Merlin app, and there are fewer and fewer birds that we hear. That is directly related to the habitat, to the resources that we provide on our properties. And there is the phrase, the canary in the coal mine. Well, we don't have coal mines here, I think. Probably not canaries either, but it's all tied together. One of the things that we have this afternoon, Friday afternoon, 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Windmill Village in the Rewild Community Garden is to talk about the mental health benefits of gardens and nature. And that's one of the things we've seen with the high school students this summer, is we're out in nature, surrounded by trees, and people put away their cell phones. They're not here. They're here, together in community, celebrating the nature that we have here in East Hampton. And it's all important, and it's up to us as a community to work with our individuals to really continue to build community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Okay, board members, do we want to discuss the presentation?
Since rarely do I go on the early end of things.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, look, I think that everybody is going to agree that this is, well, I think this is a very important conversation to have, and I'm happy we're having it. I think this is definitely a preliminary step of just acknowledging that trees are important. I think that the good news is, is that almost everybody will agree, whether you're a developer, a naturalist. I think everybody loves trees, and I think that particularly in East Hampton, we're all drawn here to the natural beauty of, you know, our beaches, our trails, our forests. So that's very, very big picture. I think that the specifics are going to be very, very important here. And so it's hard to say, you know, what that'll look like in the end. I know there's a lot of reference here. I looked through some of it, but not all of the links that you had and what other, you know, TPOs look like and how. I think the most important thing is that whatever eventual legislation might pass, that it's clear, interpretable, and enforceable. I think that the worst-case scenario is if we were to create something that, you know, sort of the worst examples of people who are developing, you know, town land, take advantage of and still get to do whatever they want, and then, you know, other people are sort of bound by difficult and, you know, tedious regulations. I'm not saying that that would happen, but that is the, that's the biggest risk, I think, is that we don't address the need. We create unnecessary hurdles for particular people and other people are able to do whatever they want, which frankly, I think is a situation we have, you know, in certain cases already. One thing that I'll say, I mentioned it in my liaison report maybe a month ago, I think that the right-of-way protection is just absolute no-brainer to me. And I don't know if that's part of this or a separate thing, but the idea that people are cutting down trees or destroying any vegetation that's not on their property is absurd. And I think that having that, you know, delineated when people are doing projects is something we could move forward on. That's a very simple thing, I think, that would have little pushback, but people currently are clearing the right-of-way and then maybe planting a couple of non-native trees or something, and that's certainly not appropriate. So I just think that the balance here is going to be important, you know, and just to highlight some other, to play devil's advocate or to make sure that we look at the other side or the concerns, I think, you know, we also want to encourage water quality. So, you know, you mentioned in here septic systems that might take bigger, bigger legion field. How do we strike the balance and make sure that we don't have two separate pieces of legislation or policies that contradict each other and end up making it very difficult to get things, you know, get things done? I also think it's going to be important to balance the longer-term planning goals. You know, I think protecting mature trees is important because we all see them and they're important to our daily lives. But I also think that in the, you know, in the planning process, we want to look longer term, and trees are living things that die. So, you know, I think there's a balance in protecting trees and what currently exists, but making sure that we don't do that at the expense of sound planning. For example, having a driveway that isn't a dangerous place because there was one tree there. I think that, and how we strike that balance, I don't know. You know, I'll lean on you guys a lot for what gets proposed. I just want to make-
With striking that balance.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure that we all understand, because it's easy, I think, to, look, this is a very feel-good conversation. I don't think you're going to get a lot of pushback if anybody says, I hate trees, cut them all down. That said, I think that, you know, everybody on this board was supportive of protecting trees and nature generally, but we all, I think, in certain cases, agree that clearing is okay for particular, you know, reasons. And so again, the specifics of how we strike that balance is going to be really, really important to me, and making sure that whatever legislation moves forward, that it isn't just a feel-good thing, that we're achieving a real, concrete goal, and recognizing and maintaining a process that is smooth and efficient and works for people. Because, you know, I'll say personally, and I think everybody's probably been involved in some sort of, you know, permitting situation or bureaucracy situation where it just didn't make sense, and it seemed like it was much more difficult to do what you were trying to do when there wasn't a real problem. And so I just want to, you know, again, balance those two things by making sure we're achieving a real goal and that the process for people on the other side, for property owners or whoever, also makes sense and is still efficient and doable. So I commend you for bringing this to us. I think that this is going to be, you acknowledge there's going to be some opposition, I'm sure that there will, but I think-
Or at least debate, right?
Yeah. I think this is exactly the kind of conversation that we as a town, as a board, need to have, and we need to be appreciative that it's going to be complicated and difficult. And that's all the more reason, I think, to dive in and do it.
Thank you, Ian. Tom, David, I don't know who wants to go next?
Yeah, look, I echo Ian's comments here. I think preservation of our trees is, as I think Len called out, it's more than just the trees, it's water quality. It goes down to the soils. It goes down to mycelium. It's, they're a huge asset, and we have to maintain them. I think to me, this falls under a kind of bigger picture of overall land management, you know. And, you know, for this to move forward, for me, I would like to see it be done by conjunction by our land management departments, our natural resources department, our planning department, and other departments, too, that will have kind of, you know, integration here. Because, you know, we're going to have a presentation later today, Ian kind of hinted at a bit, but, you know, managing land, be it on public or private lands, is critical. You know, unfortunately, we see through climate change or other factors, invasives coming in, destroying entire forests. You know, we see invasive trees coming in. You know, we have a crop of tree of heaven trees out there, like, we want them gone as soon as possible. You know, so I think, you know, understanding how this is done in the right way really needs to make sure it's touching all those relevant departments within the town department, within the town itself. You know, I know our Fire Marshal's Office, we're working on doing a presentation on, you know, what is appropriate clearing for defensible space on people's properties in terms of fire management and fire risks. And, you know, we have a very different climate here to the West Coast. They've got a more aggressive policy on that there, but a lot of what they kind of put out there in terms of what's the safe thing to do is right, and it's challenging. And when we talk about the leaves on the ground, you will hear diverging voices on that from fire chiefs who say, I want those away from the property, to, you know, the more environmental bent who might say, no, that's habitat, and we have to preserve that at all costs. We have to find that right balance as a board, and I think that's another reason why, like, look, something like this to move forward really does need to be coming from our internal departments to make it happen. With that said, I think, like, look, as Ian kind of points out, go back, big picture. What is this community all about? It is about the confluence of our tourism and our environment. And, you know, whatever industry you're in, be it building, be it retail, you name it, your overall well-being is based on having a solid tourist industry and a solid environment out here that supports that. And I think, you know, ensuring we have a healthy forest out there is key, and I think on people's properties as well, as much as we can. It's just finding that right balance, and I think it will be challenging, and communication is going to be key.
Yeah.
So there's a lot to unpack here. And what I think I'll recommend to the residents that might be watching, and might be catching the brief overview that you did, and I appreciate that, is to go online into the meeting documents. There's a lot of information in here that will elicit debate and discussion on there. So before you elicit and just send remarks in, let's try to see why these recommendations came this way in a very logical-
That's why we wanted to get it all down in one-
Completely. I'm not speaking to you. I'm speaking to the audience on there. And also, and that just means, go read this first and then come back, and we'll discuss it even more. Debate, I think it's more discussion. Couple of things on here I think that I want to mention here then, too. I don't like when I hear that things are just being nullified in court then, too. You know, if it's something about being penalized and make sure our penalties are up to the action, that's an easier thing, and I think that's something that could be accomplished. If this doesn't even move forward, that should move forward on there. One of the things, I don't believe that this tree protection is increasing the commercialization due to short-term rentals. I think that's a separate discussion point on there. Third one on here, I think we also have to discuss the cess of deer browse. If you're replanting, and a lot of the, a lot of the species that we actually recommend are not deer-proof anymore out here, and too. So I think we have to have that discussion. That comes a little bit to what the Wildlife Management Committee has done recently, the deer exlosures. Those are a couple hectares on Shelter Island, and we're now doing that also up in Grassy Hollow Preserve. And maybe we bring that back to a discussion, land management, as the other departments have discussed also then, too. Because if there's excessive deer browse on there, we lose our understory right now. And I'm going to be very honest, there is an abundance, overabundance of deer out here where I don't believe it's in balance right now. And that negatively affects our understories and our seed banks, too, and how they want to try to regenerate. But unfortunately, we can't get that all back then, too.
Also the tick epidemic.
Oh, no. Listen, my legs are itching right now.
And I will say, just for everyone who wants to know, you know, that is- Yeah, and I will say, just for everyone who wants to know, you know, that is, you know, how to effectively manage ticks and deer populations, that is a tough conversation happening both in the Wildlife Management Committee and the Tick Advisory Committee, so it's forthcoming. Thank you.
No worries. I would probably prefer, I mean, there might be two sections of state law here, I know effectiveness of the tree protections ordinances, but also there's another state laws that actually govern what's in our municipal right-of-ways. It might be prudent of us to pull that out of this as we move forward since there might be more consensus to, to work with the Critical Root Zone Protection and that, that might be an option for us to effectuate something almost more immediate as this discussion continues going on. Enforcement? You're correct. It needs to be done more and I think a lot of that actually will come with bringing in our departments that have the enforcement prerequisites or allowances and have more educational components to that then too. I think as a town board and the supervisor always, the states and queries, we want to train our, our staff always more to do their jobs, not even just better, but effectively and this might be a portion of it also. Lastly, I just had a couple of things flagged on here then too. Nope, that was enforcement also. To me, I've been trying to work on calling back the town's farmlands. A lot of pre-existing non-conforming in the area of the lanes might be old dairy farms or such and too, that we're never going to call back a working farm in the lanes. So there's ways we want to look at pre-existing non-conforming clearing, I think we have to look at the opportunity sites where we could pull back agriculture into the township for, for lands such as what we've done recently and try to get those ag lands working. Now, if ag lands are there and trees grow up because they've been not used for years, I wouldn't want to penalize trying to pull back ag lands because trees have grown up. Most all of East Hampton was deforested at one time. It was one of the natural commodities that we had here during the colonial days and wood was actually shipped away to New England from East Hampton on here. But I understand that we have not as much old growth lands, but new growth being 100 years old, which is still things we need to protect. With those ag lands, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to make sure if we were to decrease potential areas for pre-existing non-conforming clearing locations on there because they were ag lands in the, in the past, I want to make sure that we don't inhibit trying to claw back and bring them back as usable ag lands in the future. So as this discussion moves forward, that would be one of the things I would recommend to whatever the working group is going to be. Another one is our open vistas. Open vistas are in the town code. There's open vistas for the Springs Historical District, many of our historical districts, and a lot of vistas on the way that they are supposed to look to our waterways. That was attempted, I believe, in 2011 or maybe even earlier on Bluff Road, some of the areas that are also on, on also on Highway, Springs Fireplace Road is called out as far as citing of buildings, structures, fences, walls, but also how does it allow for, one of the things I enjoy the most is being able to look at an open vista but at the same time work within this potential code also. I like seeing the water. I remember one time when we were able to see the water from Montauk Highway down to the, down, down to the beach from here. Good luck on that anymore. Same thing as, I also don't really care for a monolithic line of evergreens and too, that to me is just too easy on there and I don't think people have recognized how hard it is to maintain eventually then too because they're done for the easy sale. Sorry, I've gone long here, but overall, I think this is well worth looking further into it, but there's caveats, I think we have to be very careful on, and, on, and look at a little bit more intensely as this, this potentially moves forward. So just laying it all out there then too. I appreciate this, particularly the work that went into it. I do think there's other things we have to be mindful of and other viewpoints on there, but for myself, I would like to continue looking at this. There's certain things maybe pull out, there's certain things maybe add into our long-term look. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to you all.
So it sounds like I'm looking at page 56. So it sounds like we've got-
56.
The board is-
I am, boy.
The board is in agreement that we want to, we want to move forward with a tree protection ordinance. Right. So your last bullet says you're going to come back with, or I'm asking, I'm assuming your, your next step then would be to come back with the process on how you want to draft it, if it's going to be one suite or you're breaking it down into, into pieces or, you know, buckets?
Yeah, I'd like to see in regards to that and to be able to, to look at what, again, so many municipalities on Long Island that have similar, had farming, have a lot of wooded area, have these codes. I'd like to see maybe some kind of chart that tells us what, what each or which each local town, I mean, I don't know if it needs to be statewide, certainly beginning Long Island-wide, what they've targeted.
Right.
So that we can have a comparison whenever we have a discussion of, of what we're doing, what other, other places have done. I think in that research, we've done it before, where we've always looked across municipalities to see how they're written and how we can tweak that to be specific to our town.
That's the benchmarking study of 30 that I, so it'll literally be like a big chart and all, and all the different elements, it'll show what different places did and we'll characterize it relative to like-
Yeah, the International Society of Arborists, there's a website that actually, that had about 166 of them on there.
Yeah. That, and I would, I agree with colleagues, I think specifically David, to, I think we can move on road right-of-ways in, in immediacy and we can pull that out of the overall code because they are public lands and they're, they're not private lands.
And what we do, I mean, we, the Sustainability Committee came back to you a few months ago and pulled up that Critical Root Zone piece of code that was drafted and I think went to public hearings, so you know, we would love to just see that.
Yeah, we would have to public hear it again, but obviously, yeah.
Hear it again, but you know, that, get that done.
Sure.
And then, yeah, anything else. I know, again, hung on every word of your presentation, Councilman Lee's about the right-of-ways and, you know, what the board said, so.
So I don't know if the, the images in here were from East Hampton or they were stock photos, I mean, I think that we-
Half of them were here and then some of them were-
Yeah, because I think we could also in the interim, do a little, you know, social media campaign about the importance and benefits of trees and maybe invite folks to send in photos of beautiful trees in their neighborhood or on their property or on, on town property that we could, we could share. I think that would be helpful and I think we also, so there's an education component that could be done in parallel as well as, and I know this is near and dear to Len's heart, sustainable landscaping and I think, you know, right now on the website, we have a list of, you know, native plants that we recommend that people use, but it's, it's not an approachable list and I think it's something that we can be working on as, you know, and maybe that's something I've thought about putting in as a project for the 2026 budget where we can, I don't know if it's a pamphlet that has illustration that shows what the different plant species are, but something that makes, because they're native plants are beautiful and they're attractive and it's, you know, your yard doesn't have to be all hydrangeas, I mean, you just, you know, take a look at what's, what's living here. So I-
So what's interesting to that Kathy is you've, your mind reading. Len and I are working on an invitation to all of the nonprofit organizations that are, that are, have the expertise on putting together these pamphlets. We were waiting for the season to be over with everyone so busy and taking a look at what we have as resources and reframing them in a digestible, usable form. So that's, that's something we, Len and I have been working on along with all of the organizations out there, Edwina Van Gahl and Jane Hampton, Rewild, that already have the science and the expertise to back up the concepts. So I look forward to that, that forum and I invite my colleagues also to attend that forum. I'm going to hopefully bring staff into that as well, even though it may be an evening, an evening forum.
And so Madam Supervisor, the, one of the, to the board, right, that these TPOs are not just about stopping people from taking stuff down, right? Obviously, you're going to be able to have building envelopes and clearing and, you know, there's a clearing code that has ratios that are, if you can do and as of right, then, you know, you can do it. But the other big part of these TPOs is when you do take down trees, what do you put in their place, right? And to your point, it, these, these TPOs really get much more educated to, educational and more specific about if you take out this species, you know, you should be putting back a species of equal value, we can, I'm not going to get into how that's calculated right now. And so that is a really big part about, you know, how you replant, how you revegetate and not having just the rows of, you know, the green soldiers.
One foot tall.
All in a day, right? Okay.
I think one, one piece that's going to be interesting in all of this is like, look, we have projections of what climate change out here is likely to be and although at a centigrade level, it's not considered that high individually, the impact that's going to have on our woodlands out here and the species that are currently dominant and what might come to supersede those is something we'll need to figure out.
And, and we are already impacted.
Right.
We're now looking at future impacts, the southern pine beetle and, and the dangers of wildfire because of that are present in our community now.
I mean, I put it on hold right now, but there is some research developing that looks at, you know, as places warm, so as the northern climates warn, warm, some of the native species, you know, may not able, be able to adapt, so a community also has to look at, okay, what's happening south or in warmer climates that may be the next. So I didn't include it in this, but, you know, we've started thinking a little about that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take all in what you said and, you know, we'll come back and continue the discussion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you to the committee. Okay, I think the last topic we have is the Make Room for Rescue campaign.
Yes, thank you, Madam Supervisor. Amory, thanks for bringing this up. So just some background to this, this came to me by way of the Fire Commissioners across East Hampton Town. Basically, there have been continued issues and reports of fire emergency vehicles not being able to access properties or being delayed in accessing properties and, you know, just want to take people through, this is an educational program we're going to be putting out there. There are going to be two posters that you'll see posted around towns, post offices, daddies, et cetera, that just kind of really emphasize what the key messaging is we're going to have on here and I'm going to walk you through that kind of key messaging out here as we get there too. So just wait for that to come up and then we'll jump in.
Is it, you don't see it on the screen? It's-
I can see it from here.
Second from the right? Make Room for Rescue at the bottom, Amory?
So I see it there, I'm just trying to get it.
Doesn't want to open?
Wait, let me, let me do this.
I can see your cursor now moving around. There you go.
Perfect.
Okay.
Great. So this is an example of the poster you're going to see around town and it just kind of really highlights a few different messages on here that I'm going to take you through. So if you want to jump to the next slide. So the first thing is, why does this matter? And I will speak from this both firsthand and anecdotally, but if we can't reach you, we can't save you. I've been to fire calls where the ladder trucks have not been able to get out the driveway so they've had to have guys jump out, get a chainsaw up there, remove an offending limb that stops a ladder track being able to get into the property, like, this is time and that is property and potentially lives lost. It can be an ambulance having difficulty getting down certain driveways because it's too narrow. You know, we've said this throughout, you know, the building of the new medical center in East Hampton, time, time is heart, time is life. You have the, the golden hour for heart attacks, you have the platinum minute for trauma cases, like, the sooner we can get to you, the better off you are as an individual. You know, if your driveway is too narrow, blocked, overgrown, it delays ambulances and fire trucks and police, so that, that's why we're doing this. Next slide, please. So what are the town code requirements? The minimum driveway width per town code is 12 feet. That is based, you know, largely around these emergency vehicles, they can be up to that wide. And then if the height requirement is for 13 feet six inches, so, you know, that's higher than you might think. If you drive around town, you see some bridges, you know, there's, there's 9.9 feet and you're looking at it like that's pretty high. It, it's, it's a significant height, so it's worth kind of getting out there with, with either yourself, with your tape measure, with your landscaper out there and have a look what that height is because, you know, if a vehicle is catching up on a branch, it's kind of in that height area, it can't get to you. So the height piece is something that's often overlooked. Additionally, keeping, you know, driveways free of parked cars, bins and walls, you know, obviously some people park in their driveway, but you still need to kind of leave that access for the emergency personnel to get into your driveway, especially the longer it is. Fairly obvious one, but you know, if you have bridges, culverts over there, you know, they have to be constructed to support emergency vehicles adequately. And then lastly on here is the turnaround requirement. So for those of you who have driveways that exceed 500 feet or 152 meters, you are required to have a turnaround in there for emergency vehicles. It varies, you can contact the Fire Marshal's Office for exact dimensions of what those will need to be. The number to call is 631-329-3473 or you can email firesafety@ehamptonny.gov. Next slide, please. So just home on a checklist, what we would like you to be doing is measure your driveway width today, trim any overhead branches that you might think are obstructing access, you know, if, if there's any wires that are low, please contact your service providers, be it PSEG, Optimum, have them come in, you know, explain to what the town code is, they know what it is, they need to get those wires up above those restrictive heights. Keep your par, drive path clear at all times and maintain your turnaround as, as possible. So in terms of getting involved, as I said, you're going to see these flyers going out there, posters, we have a little social media campaign going as well. We're working with the fire districts and the Fire Marshal Office to have a community driveway check day where, you know, someone from the fire department can come out to your property, have a look at it, just advise you if they see anything that's problematic. You can also reach out to the Fire Marshal's Office for that as well. And then last slide here, just putting this out in, for our Spanish-speaking community as well, you know, obviously, you know, if people don't speak English as a first language, we want to make sure this information is available to you or anyone who might be working on your property as well. And that's it for me.
Great, thank you, Tom.
Yeah, Tom, I commend you for bringing this forward. Again, it's like a public service announcement to what's already in the code. I would also even say that I think the town should look at the code for the widths of the driveways, knowing that apparatus are getting larger in the future, but this is something that everyone is, it's only helping yourself if you make sure that you have this access and clear the way for emergency responders. So I thank you very much, Tom.
Yeah, Tom, this is something that even when you're pulling in and out of your own driveway, you know, if you don't have the awareness of the size of, of emergency vehicles, it's never going to be in your head. So this campaign for education on that, I think, is really important. I think it will save lives.
Yeah, I agree. I've, I've heard the same concerns from, from fire departments and, you know, that this is a real issue. Of course, it's not an issue at all until it is and then it's too late. So I really appreciate the public service announcement and I think we should get the word out there and hopefully people will listen and, and sometimes it's, it's going to be a very minor change with a single tree limb or a single, you know, branch or something like that. So again, in the case of emergency, people need the space to access it, so thank you, Tom.
Yes, I understand, there's a press release going out and you've got a social media campaign that you're working on with Patrick, so thank you for bringing this to us.
Just, just one thing that one of the fire members mentioned to me as well, what we're doing is just remind people on house numbers too, it obviously relates to this, that, you know, as per town code, you are required to have house numbers on your property mailbox or outside your property. The size needs to be at least four inches in height with a minimum stroke width of half an inch in a contrasting color. Just, I mean, that's just so critical that if the vehicles are driving down the road and they don't wish number your houses, they honestly don't always know to get in there, so please do ensure you're doing that as well.
Great, thank you. All right, you're up again for liaison reports.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we will start off with human services. Just a reminder to everyone, we're going to have the seniors lunch tomorrow, 1:00 p.m. at the American Legion Amagansett. Great, looking forward to that and seeing everybody there. Just what's been going on with our senior nutrition program, last week, sorry, from the second to the fifth, we had 95 clients that we serve congregated meals to and for the grab and the go for the same dates, we had 80 clients we gave meals to. The senior center will be closed tomorrow, September 17th because of the senior nutrition program. Additionally, going on November 6th, there is the East Hampton High School Health and Wellness Fair on November 6th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. The Human Services Department will have a featured booth there, please do feel free to stop by and understand some of the services we offer, health tips, wellness fun and meaningful connections. of the services we offer. Health tips, wellness fun, and meaningful connections. And then lastly, for human services, just a reminder that there's a Wellness 60+ class at Ashwag Hall beginning next week, Wednesday, September 24th, with Keigong at 1:00 p.m. As I kind of spoke to a little bit earlier today, the Fire Marshal's Office is going to be doing a work session upcoming on defensible spaces, just to kind of find that balance for how people can protect their property within the laws of the code. ADU implementation, we're looking to get the code proposed code changes in front of the planning board on the 24th of September meeting. Waiting to head back on the planning department for that one. Digitization, I'm working with all the department heads. An email went out just to understand, you know, property, data ownership of specific data points by department heads, so we can kind of help work on our databases for that. Eastern Fire Commissioners, we have our next meeting Tuesday, November 26th at 7:00 p.m. This will be at the SAG Harbor Fire Department. Disabilities Advisory Board, we're meeting this Friday at 2:00 p.m. Wildlife Management Committee, few things on the agenda for our upcoming meeting. Deer population is one. Suffolk County has also now started allowing crossbow hunting on its land. We'll be discussing that from the Wildlife Committee and what their recommendation is as to whether they would like to see that allowed on town lands as well. Business Committee is meeting tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. Emergency Preparedness, just a reminder to people that this is Hurricane Awareness Month. Just a few quick checklist things. Ensure you have a battery powered radio and fresh batteries. Check your supply of flashlights, blankets, nonperishable food, and bottled water. Create an emergency communications plan. Develop an evacuation plan. Check your cell phones, tablets, and other mobile devices. Make sure you have cash available. Banks may be closed or inaccessible after a storm. Fill up your vehicle's fuel tank. Bring in unsecured objects and furniture from patios and balconies. Compile a list of emergency phone numbers, including, for example, PSEG. Discuss storm and lightning safety with your family. And then if you need information on utilities, etc., you can follow PSEG Long Island on Facebook for updates before and during after the storm. Tick Control, we have a meeting this Friday at 4:00 p.m. We will be discussing management strategies for tick populations. It's going to cover a wider range of things from the Four Poster Program to increased deer hunting and donation of meat to food pantries. That's also going to kind of be happening with the Wildlife Committee, too. But just one thing to say to people right now out there, nymph ticks are hugely abundant. Please be very careful when you're out there. There are guidelines on the town website as to help check yourself, but wear long pants, use methrin. They are horrific. So I'm pleased to be aware. Lastly, there is a board meeting tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. for the YMCA, which we'll be discussing the applicable costs.
So I
Thank you.
I took one for the team and I visited Town Lane Park the other day, and I have nymph ticks itching my legs right now.
It's a banner year for them.
So thank you very much. I've done
It's unbelievable.
Did really, really well all season long. But anyway, my own fault. So Miss Preserve Committee met this past week. We discussed a management plan for the three properties that are at the edge of Hog Creek that are coming forward to the town shortly. Also working with Scott Wilson to further develop, moving forward, Town Lane Park and what was presented to the town board about the Sofa Family Foundation. So we'll continue on those discussions, just to let you know, that's still moving. Want to talk about the Montauk dredging that we talked about last week, in discussions with the Army Corps of Engineers and their contractor. We're still looking at the exact timing of the project, and it might actually be pushed for about a month, and then we're going to find that out and we'll let the fishing industry and the Coast Guard, everyone know once we get some more determinants on that. I also want to discuss everyone about the easements that were, that were procured. Myself, working with internal working group, we procured the necessary easements in record time for the four properties. Once asked, Army Corps Engineers gave us the notice to proceed on there. At a timeframe, the town board and the supervisor did not wait on those easements. They moved forward expeditiously and procure those easements unlike what other municipalities have been able to accomplish recently on their own Army Corps projects. I want to let everyone know that in Montauk, we are continuing the work of the Carl Fisher House. We had a meeting recently with the Montauk Historical Society and doing some capital improvements to that historically, locally historically landmarked property, which will include HVAC. It's going to be a large project, and the Historical Society is very happy with what the recommendations are. We'll bring that to the town board, and we look forward to trying to get that out to bid and by the end of this calendar year also. So I'll continue bringing that forward to everyone. I want to let everyone know that there was some drainage, as we've heard from a drainage contract today, that was in the areas of Euclid and South Erie, I think, that there was some slumping in some of our drainage. That has been fixed by the contractor, patched and returned, and hopefully the potholes are done. And again, if there's anything else that occurs, we will get them fixed immediately.
Yeah, thank you very much.
No worries. We're continuing to work at the Westlake Commercial Dock. Again, it's another initiative of the town board to, to upgrade our fishing, commercial fishing facilities down there. I actually had a very nice meeting with one of the restaurateurs, the son of the restaurateurs that's running the restaurant. And we might look to maybe add a little more beautification in that area. I'll bring that to the town board or see, see what our availability is. But I thought it made, made a lot of sense. And anyway, I want to thank, thank Christopher for that. Also, in downtown Montauk, we're going to be moving on some ADA saw cutting. This is a process in which the highway department has procured a contract that will actually saw cut lips on sidewalks. So reducing trip hazards also then, too, that are out there in the, specifically in the downtown Montauk area. Let's see here. I am not going to be here for this current Thursday. I have a family obligation that I will be leaving town tomorrow, but coming back late Thursday night then, too. So you guys have fun while I'm away. But I do have some resolutions on. I already emailed the clerk's office. It will be dispersed. If you have any questions on these resolutions, please let me know. One of them is going to be to hire Bob Hefner and also a contractor due to examination of the Henry Mitchell's home at the Dodge property. Again, we have IA installations, as Jeannie Croson mentioned today. One of them is at the Montauk Substation. The reason why that's super important is because that's a public bathroom also. I don't think everyone recognizes that. The Montauk Substation, the town board is continuously looking for opportunity sites to increase that public infrastructure there, potentially for a new multi-department station there. But right now, it is extremely important to upgrade that public bathroom because it is one of the IA system, because it is one of the only public bathrooms in downtown Montauk that is open year round. That's all I have. And if you have any questions, you know, please let me know. I'll be available.
Thank you, David.
My pleasure.
Yes, I'm going to start off, Jason, if I could have the cleanup day slide put up. The Litter Action Committee, actually, the town has designated the third Sunday, the third Saturday in September as cleanup day. East Hampton is again participating this year. It's a national cleanup day. It's actually international. And we're asking all residents, community groups, businesses, and schools to organize your own local cleanup. So how it works is choose a road, beach, trail, or park, rally your group, and clean up anytime. And also, please send us pictures of your, of your cleanup, and we're happy to gather them on the, on the Litter Action Committee's Instagram account. Thank you, Jason. Next one, we have another happening. This is for our, Gloria mentioned it, our compost and bin rain barrel sale. Again, this is a partnership, but East Hampton has, has provided the contract. And this is offering discounts on compost bin and, and rain barrel sales. Also, there's a webinar on Tuesday, today, between 6:00 and 7:00. You can go to rearwildlongisland.org/ compost to sign up. And you can save money by participating in our compost and barrel sale, rain barrel sale, the order online by Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. Everybody loves a bargain, and there's certainly some good, good discounts on backyard composting. It's 35% off. And you can reduce waste, save money, feed your garden, conserve water, protect our bays, win, 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 win. And there are compost coaches for support. Thank you, Jason. The Energy, the Sustainability Committee met yesterday. Obviously, this was the topic of that meeting in general. Also noting that in our code, gas powered leaf blowers are allowed to be used as of the 15th. However, again, we note that this is not a time period where leaves are falling, and would like to look at that schedule to make it more efficient for when we actually have fall leaves coming down.
The 15th or the 20th?
It's the 15th, isn't it?
Double check.
But it's soon. But again, if you look outside, it's still beautiful, and the leaves are still green, and there's no leaves falling. Change Hampton is having an event in, outside in our community pollinator garden here at Town Hall on Saturday, September 20th, 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. There will be music, poetry, a tour of the new native grassland pollinator gardens. The purpose of this event is to honor all that have contributed to the success of the garden and the meadows. This is the second year, and it's doing beautifully. And it's a great example of what you, too, can do. So please stop by tomorrow. I'm sorry, stop by Saturday, September 20th, 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Also, for the New York State Grant Group, we have presentations that were on today of where we are in that process. And there will be a resolution on Thursday to hire the consulting team that the selection committee has recommended to the town board. And I believe for now, that's all I have.
Leaf blowers are the 21st.
21st. Didn't want to give out the false information, but again, I think we should take a look at that as there's no leaves coming down anywhere near September 21st. That's all I have. Thank you, Kate. Ian?
Yes, the siding on the Parsons Blacksmith Shop will be being replaced starting this week, and that should be completed in November or as late as December. Excited to see that project go through. I think that's a lovely building in the heart of Springs. Also in the heart of Springs, Springs Fest, the second annual Springs Fest will take place on October 4th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. I don't know if anybody who was there last year, but there were a lot of people there. So I'm sure some people listening were there. It's a lovely event, celebrating springs in a beautiful setting. I encourage everybody to go. The Spring CAC meets tonight at 7:00 p.m. at Ashwag Hall. 7:00 p.m., note, that's a different start time than normal. Normally, it's at 6:00, so 7:00 p.m. tonight. And there will be a candidates forum with various candidates running for election in November election. Property Management Committee will meet tomorrow, tomorrow, Wednesday, right in this room at 4:30. From 4:30 to 5:30, the main topic of conversation will be the management plan for the Osborne Homestead. I know we're going to have visitors from Wayne Scott, at least I expect to, and, and welcome all members of the public to help us craft that management plan before, hopefully, we bring it to this board in the near future for adoption. Also just want to note, Dave already mentioned this, but the Henry Mitchell Home that's going to be investigated further for, to just to look into the history there. That sort of, that idea came with, with help from the Property Management Committee. Bob Hefner did a, a report implying that that probably is the Henry Mitchell House, but there's so many layers that have been added, you know, after the fact that the Property Management Committee recommended, and I wholeheartedly support, I know Dave does as well, to investigate, to find out, you know, that, that that may be a very important part of our history. And if it is, we want to make sure that's preserved before we go to RFP or, or figure to end user for the Dodge property as a whole. Community Housing Advisory Board will meet next Wednesday on September 24th at 5:00 p.m. in the Planning Department Conference Room. Again, all members of the public are welcome to attend. Excited to have the new housing director, Mark Morgan Perez, who's had a busy first week. Excited to have him join and meet that board. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Ian. Last week, Chief Sarlo, Captain Martin, Lieutenant Alversa, Town Administrator Becky Hansen, and I sat down with the superintendents from East Hampton Springs, Amagansett, and Montauk to continue our discussions regarding the town school resource, the school resource officer program. Right now, we have one full-time SRO at the East Hampton High School and another full-time officer covering our feeder schools. Lieutenant Alversa oversees the program and also steps in directly supporting investigations, leading classroom programs, and working with school administrators on safety and security planning. This school year, Sergeant Nick Lloyd, a certified SRO, will also be working more regularly in our schools, strengthening the connection between students, staff, and our police department. I've also requested that another officer complete the required week-long training so that by the end of the year, we will have five members of the department certified as school resource officers. At its core, our SRO program is about protecting our children and strengthening the bonds that keep our schools safe. The program's work will continue to focus on teaching the DARE curriculum to fifth and sixth graders, supporting classroom learning with presentations and health and driver's education, while working closely with school staff on behavioral disciplinary and safety matters, and addressing youth-related investigations with care and professionalism. We understand how important it is for families and schools to feel supported by a visible police presence, and we are committed to providing that support. And just as important, our officers are there to build positive relationships with our young people, fostering trust and understanding that will carry beyond the classroom, ensuring the safety and well-being of our children will always remain a top priority for the town. Yesterday afternoon, Patrick, Becky, and I were on the Long Island Railroad Strike Preparations Zoom meeting. And in the, in the middle of the Zoom meeting, we got word that the immediate threat of a Long Island Railroad strike has been delayed. The strike deadline has been pushed back by at least two months and possibly into the spring. For context, the town has more than two dozen staff members that rely on the Long Island Railroad to get to work. So we had been making plans on how to accommodate staff schedules in the light, in light of a strike. And then lastly, I just wanted to, I had punted last week on my reporting out on my East Hampton SAG Harbor CAC. We talk quite a bit sometimes about traffic and intersections, and they were talking about the new bypass at Steven Hans Path, Cedar Street, and Old Northwest. There were some reports that people are not stopping for the stop signs. And there's also concern about the intersection of Acabonic and Collins, where there's a three-way stop. So I've asked East Hampton Town Police Department to pull accident reports so we can look at the data. We also talked about the, the flooding that happens when we get these, you know, incredible rainstorms at Collins and North Main Street. We still have, you know, issues there. And it realized that we had, it's been a while since we've gotten an update from the county on the county road reconstruction project. So I reached out to County Legislature Anne Welker to get an update and also to see when our town staff will be able to look at the engineering plans. Wanted to just touch base, one of the things we talked about, and, and I've heard from other community members, particularly during the season, is that Uber drivers were parking along the town's right of way and were destroying the shoulder, leaving litter behind. That is something Tom and I, we've discussed at our public safety meetings, and PD and the other agencies, code enforcement and whatnot are well aware and have, you know, kept their eyes on. And then under the old business, we talked about apparently a trash can was removed from North Main Street, and that was by the convenience store. And the reason that was done is it was really for the safety of our town staff. Parking a garbage truck there was blocking sightlines, and it wasn't safe for our staff to be in and out there. So the CAC has asked for a garbage can to be located at, right near 20 Springs Fireplace Road, the Cheryl Dairy property that we purchased, and closer to the senior center. So I relayed that to Steve O'Brien, and he's going to look into that. The east, the CAC has adopted a highway along that stretch of Springs Fireplace Road. They go out religiously at least once a month. So they know where the hotspots are for, for trash, and that's why they're, they're requesting these two trash cans. And I think that's about all we covered in our East Hampton CAC. So that is all I have from my liaison report. So we can move on to resolutions.
My pleasure to offer Resolution 2025-1233. This is approved agreement with Pecanic Land Trust for mowing of CPF properties not to exceed $760 per year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have Resolution 1234, which is to support the justice, Town Justice Court for applying for funds from the Justice Court Assistance Program for the 2025-2026 cycle. I resolved that the Board of the Town of East Hampton authorizes the town, East Hampton Town Court to apply for JCAP grant in the 2025-26 grant cycle of up to $30,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1235 is to accept security and undertaking at Third Street, Invesco LLC, Urban Renewal Parcel 17, and SP
Urban Renewal Parcel 17, and SP 2-1. And this is resolve the undertaking with the following security. You're hereby accepted by the town. Again, this is Third Street, Invesco LLC. The location of the property is 8 Third Street in Springs, and the security is $16,500.
Second.
All in favor?
Resolution 1236 is approval of various special events for September 2025.
Second.
Just discussion, I think we should just, there's a couple of big ones that I think it's warrants.
Okay, so I'll just run through them all. It's the Arts, Jess Frost, the Arts at Duck Creek. That's for the 2025 Music Series. Zo Abideya Trio, this will take place on Saturday, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Rain date is the next day. The East Hampton Union Free School will hold their East Hampton High School Homecoming at the Honorable Fred W. Thiel Junior Recreation Facility at Stephen Hans Path on Friday, September 26th, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The U.S., the Bicycle Show is U.S., God's Love We Deliver. This is their ride to Montauk, starting in Bridgehampton, New York, throughout East Hampton, and ending at Montauk County Park, Third House, Saturday, September 27th, 10:00 AM through 7:30 PM. And lastly, the Mighty Men Triathlon Swim-Bike Run yearly event is starting at Lion's Sacrafield and the parking area on South Erie Avenue, the various town roads, ending at Lion's Sacrafield Sunday, September 28th. This will take place at, from early in the morning, 6:50 to 12:30 PM, and the setup's the day before.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to table Resolution 1237. I'm going to move that on Thursday, just for the sake of tracking, and it'll be easier to notice that public here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Resolution 1238, this is to establish a leave bank share time for a town employee.
Second.
All in favor?
I have one walk-on resolution. It's ID 33433, and this is to terminate probationary employee.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so those are the resolutions we have for today. So do I have a motion to go into exec session?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for CPF, personnel, real estate, litigation, and contracts.
Second.
All in favor? Since we have a hard stop tonight at 5:00, could we do 2:15?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that good for everybody?
That works for me.
Okay.
Send in line for 2:10.
All right. Thank you, LTV.